Dana, did you end up with the final, 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 final copy? You're muted.
Sorry, it's been a day. Is that the one that you just sent me?
Yes, so all the wording is the same. We just wanted to make sure we, working with Trune, our attorney, just making sure that we propose the right letter. So the only thing that will change if it is passed would be the word resolution in the header. That was, that was in the discussion.
Okay.
Um, so we've opted to leave that out at the moment.
Okay, so it's the, it's the copy that you sent me at 6:00 PM?
Tonight, yep.
Yep, okay, yep, I have that one then, right here. Perfect. You're gonna be busy tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
That's good, right?
Yeah. Um, I'm always busy.
Now, busier, I should have said.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, the only thing with that is ju- juggling the, the sleep, trying to get in some, some sleep when I can.
Well, let's see, when's it supposed to stop?
I tried to do that today and then Governor decided to come on at 1:30, so I had to watch that, and then my phone has been non-stop.
Well, the snow is supposed to slow down.
About midnight.
Yeah, it looks like about midnight, maybe 1:00. It's still 60% at 1:00, so could still be a noozy out there. Well, luckily, we don't have in-person learning for the 6 through 12. K through 5 may have a problem if it continues the way it is.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll...
Ironic, we just get back to school and we finally get a bunch of snow.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll see what it is, you know, see what the roads are in the morning. The lucky part is, you know, grounds would only have to clear three parking lots instead of everything.
Yeah.
So that would help them, I guess, just a matter of what the roads are.
Absolutely. Fired up, we get to watch sports.
Yes.
Very fired up.
Yes, I, uh, actually, I got the privilege today to tour the high school with Kevin. Uh, kind of get an idea of what it looks like in between classes and, hi Sarah.
Hi Sarah.
Hi.
What the high school is like in between classes and, and I got to view first lunch. And kind of see how it's going and I, I can't express how awesome our staff and students are.
Well, absolutely.
Everybody was, class change, hey Brett? Class change and everything, everybody had a mask on, I didn't see one person without a mask.
Olivia has a teacher and this is awesome. They did it, he called it a mask break and they went outside, everyone stood like six feet apart, everyone got to take their mask off for like 90 seconds, and they got to put their masks back on and went back into his classroom and like Olivia's like, it was like the best thing because it was just like a mask break, you know? So, I thought that was, I thought that was pretty, you know, outside of the box thinking and, um...
Great way to improvise, absolutely.
Absolutely.
As a reminder, we are live already, guys, so... Alright, busy, busy man, I bet.
Yeah, we've been busy this afternoon and evening, for sure, got a, 8 o'clock, we got a League AD meeting tonight after this, so, uh, trying to figure out how we're gonna move forward.
You didn't have well done already, Brett?
Three times, but now it's the fourth.
I know, I said, I'm not putting this one in my, my, uh, my calendar until I'm 100%, because I've already put it in three times, it'll be the fourth darn time.
Yep. It's good though, it's good to be getting back at it. Kids deserve it, coaches deserve it, I'm excited for them.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna feel like the, uh, the, the coach from dodgeball because I'm gonna be in a wheelchair when I come to these things, so I'll just be like the old man in dodgeball screaming from the side because can't, can't really crush up bleachers very well.
Well, if you got a wheelchair, you can sit on the side, you'll have like best seat in the house.
Yeah, those make me nervous, I'll be like, ah! Yeah, I was able to find a friend who had a, my sister had a friend who had a extra wheelchair and was able to graciously let me borrow it, so I could go watch my kids.
Hi, just a reminder to everybody, you may wanna go ahead and mute your mics as we wait, so that way we don't hear everything going on in your house and all that good stuff. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Dawn.
Hi Dawn.
Hi Dawn.
Brandon, familiar face in the board meeting.
How you doing?
Good sir, good sir, you?
Very good, as long as you're not driving anywhere.
I'll probably be out right after this, we've got, we've got customers that are open, so...
I figured you might be.
We'll be out plowing, plowing here shortly.
Stay safe out there.
Kevin, welcome sir.
Hey, Jeff, who's, Brandon Halltine, what's, what's going on?
I just said, familiar face to the board meeting.
I just missed you so much, I can't stay away.
Here we go, here we go. Alright, hopefully everybody's doing good and, uh, everybody's doing okay. I made it in before the 7 o'clock mark. So yes, we'd be able to start on time.
Alright, thank you guys, I know you guys had a, uh, bond meeting also tonight. Thank everybody for joining us.
Alright.
Give it one more minute, we'll start right at 7 o'clock.
Yep, I'm gonna make sure I've got the flag, yep, I do. And, I wanna get this agenda. Agenda, agenda. And... Think I got it. Think I got it. And I do, alright.
Alright, 7 o'clock, thank you guys, uh, call this meeting to order, Thursday, February 4th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Pledge of allegiance, please Kevin.
Yes sir, let me pull up the flag here. And... Got it.
Thank you sir.
Yep.
Everybody recite after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay.
Thank you sir.
You're welcome.
Uh, roll call please.
Dawn Fortin.
Here.
Abby Green.
Is unable to join, she had an emergency meeting.
Kate Sarah Jones here, Craig Corpola, upset, Dana Wells Jenny.
I'm here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
And Tim Wood.
I'm here.
Thank you Sarah, uh, remind everybody of the norms of collaboration. 1.05 addenda, anybody have anything to add to tonight's meeting? Thank you very much, we'll move on to 2.01, comments from the public.
Okay, it looks like we have Brandon here to do that, so we'll open the floor to him first.
Thanks Tammy, good to hear your voice as well. Good evening board, thanks for, uh, taking our comments this evening. With the purpose of the meeting tonight specifically, in regards to this, I guess it'll be like a referendum or something, but, uh, I'll let you talk about particulars on it, but what, what, really what's behind it is what I'm more interested in, and that's that as a local community, as a local school board, and, and we're not the only ones, it's all over the state. People are taking an interest in whether we have a right to stand up for ourselves despite what state government is going to tell us we can and can't do with our high school athletes. I would be in support of a local referendum that we at least should have the discussion. I'm gonna tell you that, as we've looked at all this, I was absolutely just in awe of the last two weeks, watching the Governor's office and her response to the pandemic within the last couple of weeks, with regards to one specific thing, and that's the science. Since I started as a board member, I've been through the pandemic up until the point you just said, isolation, and throughout all that, we were always told to follow the science, we had a lot of spirited debates over it. But we're asked to follow the science, and the science now is pointing in the direction of being able to safely let your athletes participate in extracurricular activities, and then you choose to ignore it. That to me was reprehensible. I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that had all of the students, their parents, the, the various grassroots efforts that came about on Facebook and, and otherwise, that led to the rally at the, at the Governor's, uh, office at the state Capitol, I, I have no doubt that if those things had not occurred, that we would not be returning to play right now. I don't think that the Governor had any intention of doing that because she was choosing to ignore the science. I still haven't heard an explanation from her as to why it took this long. I don't think we'll get one. But my point is, I think we need to look critically as a school board, from this point on, as we get better, as the vaccine starts to, uh, make, make more people immune to the virus, and as we start to grow and come out of this thing, we need to be looking at critically things like this in our kids' welfare. And I'm glad that the decision was made the way it was, but I don't think it would have been but for all the people that rally around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mike Clothier, Coach Mike is on the line here, so I'll give the, uh, next section to him.
Hey, good evening everybody, uh, for those that don't, uh, know me, my name's Mike Clothier, I'm the head varsity football coach here at Penfield. Um, I just want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. On the debate on whether our Penfield students should have the ability to participate in extracurricular activities is decided by our board, and, you know, when I say that, obviously, we have some different things that happened today which Brandon touched on, but, uh, who's to say it isn't gonna go back to the way that it was, so with that being said, instead of the technical aspect, I kinda wanna touch on it from a coaching aspect and just from the kids' aspect and, and, uh, talk about my support as far as what it comes to the board sending something on to make it, a community decision and a board decision, and, uh, when we talk about the ability to participate in extracurricular activities, um, as a coach, a father, a community member, I gotta, I personally witnessed, uh, many positive effects that those extracurricular activities have on our youth. For those that don't know, my regular job, I'm employed with the Department of Corrections. With that being said, I, I've maintained a strong relationship with community mental health. Um, and it's truly alarming to me that according to CMH, the suicide rate in Calhoun County has almost tripled since COVID affected our community, and the majority of that is our youth. I've been blessed with the opportunity and the ability to coach at my alma mater that I love so much. I don't coach for the money, for the spotlight, you know, I do it because of my love for the kids, present and future, ex-players, coaches, that wore the uniform proudly, the community that loves the school so much, and my love for the game, and was saying that participating on a sports team, in the band, uh, the drama and arts, field trips, social events, they're all part of the high school slash school experience, you know, and sports did so many things for me as a person, you know, allowed me to make so many friends from all walks of life that I'm still friends with today. Taught me how to work as a team, value others' opinions and skills. Taught me hard work has its rewards, and these are just a few of the values that are attained involving every one of those extracurricular activities that I mentioned, and these aren't only for our students, but they're also for the diehard Penfield fans, students, parents, friends and families that wanna be part of the experience as a whole as well. You know, and most humans need that companionship for their mental health. If we don't advocate for our kids, so many will be left without the well-rounded total life experience that gets them prepared for the next stage of their life. Obviously, sports also helps with the physical aspect of our children's lives. I'm the spitting image of that, I don't know how many pounds I put on since this COVID started, so we'll, I need to get back into the gym and get a routine as well, but based on all that, we have info on COVID-19 about our youth, and a lot of it's conflicting. I, I don't, I don't feel we should be living our lives in fear, I believe we should take precautions, which is what the false, you know, sports season included, from tennis to football to, you know, cheer, well, you know, myself as well as all the coaching staff asked health questions, took temps, made people stay at home when they felt ill. Those are all the things we need to do. The precautions we need to take, but this still needs to be a local decision by the board and the families of each community to make these decisions under advisement from the MHSAA and the local health department. That's all I have, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, there was one more person signed up, but it does not look like they are currently here. That was Nate Burns, so, uh, we can move forward.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, 3.01, athletic resolution. Dana Wells, if you would please read the letter.
Yes, I will. Board of Education of Penfield Community Schools, we recognize, sorry, we the undersigned members of the Board of Education of Penfield Community Schools, having been elected by the citizens of Penfield School District, do hereby declare, on the 4th day of February 2021, whereas the local boards of education are authorized by Michigan law to make policy for their districts, and where I, whereas other states have children fully engaged in their full range of extracurricular offerings, including sports, band, drama and the arts, field trips and social events such as winter formal and prom, and these activities have not been linked to increased outbreaks in those states. And whereas this board recognizes that the experience of education consists of opportunities for learning, development and growth, both in the classroom and throughout extracurricular activity. And whereas the parents and citizens of our districts have expressed concerns about the, not only the negative academic impact, but also negative mental and physical repercussions of continued lockdowns upon students, and whereas the state of Michigan successfully empowered local communities and school boards to make decisions for in-person or virtual instruction when returning to the 2020 slash 2021 school year, and whereas the Board of Education of Penfield Community Schools has carefully considered said concerns. Whereas the Director of the Center of Disease Control has indicated that schools are one of the safest places for kids, and the World Health Organization has urged world leaders to stop using lockdown, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Penfield Community Schools requests that the state of Michigan empower our local community and school board to make decisions regarding extracurricular offerings, including sports, band, drama and the arts, field trips and social events in coordination with MHSAA and our local health department and to remove any restrictions that prevent us from doing so.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, that is the letter of, uh, the topic. If I can get a motion on that, we can move to discussion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion made by Dawn Fortin.
I second that.
Seconded by Dana Wells Jenny, thank you ladies. Um, I'm gonna touch on this real quick and, and I'm gonna ask, uh, for, for Brett, Brett Steele, our athletic director, has joined us tonight, he is a very busy man tonight. I'll let Brett speak and, and let him go, he has another meeting after this. Um, for those viewing, the, the point behind this letter, there is several, several school districts that are submitting this letter to the state, asking for its said permission to more advocate on a, on a local level, uh, rather than the state determining on a state level. The state has empowered our local boards, as it says, for in-person learning. Uh, the board is responsible for budget, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we're asking to please let us determine, uh, our, our athletics, our athletics and after-school events. The, I can say that the letter mainly schools are using does not include the term, uh, extracurricular activities. Uh, working with Harper Creek High School, they have decided to add it, and I thought it was a very great idea, so we can include band, drama, um, exactly that, after-school, uh, clubs, et cetera. Um, so with that being said, a little insight on what the letter is, Brett Steele, if you, if you would, sir.
Yeah, first of all, uh, thanks for having invited me here, I think it's, it's an exciting day. I think everybody involved with, uh, high school sports and extracurricular activities are excited about today. Uh, I think Brandon and, and Mike illustrated very, very well what, what, uh, extracurricular opportunities mean to students, uh, throughout high schools in the state of Michigan. And, uh, you know, I'm excited to be back in the planning stages to get things rolling and, uh, looking forward to, you know, providing those opportunities for our, our student athletes, uh, in, uh, at both the high school and the middle school level, uh, starting as soon as possible next week. So, uh, you know, we're excited with the news, uh, a lot of things going on right now in terms of planning and, and, uh, getting things aligned, we're still waiting to hear some guidance from MHSAA regarding, uh, safety protocols and procedures that we will have in place at events and practices and things of that nature. But I've touched base with all of our coaches today and, uh, needless to say, and all their student athletes at the high school, needless to say, everybody's excited about the, uh, opportunity that, uh, presents itself now moving forward, so, uh, I know as my, you know, I, I can only speak to my own experiences from a student athlete's perspective long, long ago, coach's perspective long ago, and an athletic director's perspective for the last 20 years. School without athletics and extracurricular activities is just not the same. So we're excited to have it reinstated and looking forward to a, uh, enjoyable winter season.
Thank you very much Brett for joining us tonight, um, you stated you have a AD meeting even later tonight, so if you gotta take off, I, I totally understand, I just wanna thank you on behalf, uh, for all the hard work you've put in, uh, talking with you over the several, you know, last couple of weeks, you had a couple hour AD meeting last Friday, uh, a lot of work behind the scenes that you're doing, sir, and I very much appreciate it.
My pleasure, thanks.
Uh, Kevin, do you have anything to add before I move on to board members? You're muted. You're muted. You should have this down by now.
Well, I don't have a dog barking in the background, I'm at the office. No, I, uh, I was gonna use my comments for the superintendent's comments, are we at that point?
Nope.
Because I'll wait till the superintendent's comment's toward the end.
Thank you sir.
Yes sir.
Board, anybody like to state anything?
I just, uh, oh, you go for Sarah, go Sarah.
Go ahead Sarah.
Um, I just have some concerns with this document that I want to discuss as a board. Um, first and foremost, I am all for sports and extracurricular activities. I have a student athlete who's very excited to get back into basketball, and I'm all about that. My concern is that, um, with the statement that the government, Governor made today, um, we're getting athletics back, so it's more of the underlying things that are in this document that are concerning to me, um, and it's precedents that we're setting with this, um, that I don't know if we wanna get into. First and foremost is that this is a form of political lobbying, um, and if I'm understanding correctly, that has not been, um, the practice of the board in recent years. Um, not that we can't do things differently, but anytime you do any kind of political lobbying, we're aligning ourselves with partisan, um, practices, and we were elected as nonpartisan officials, and I think we need to stay very non-bias and be, um, aware of that practice. Also, I'm concerned that this was created out...
You're breaking up Sarah, you're breaking up a little bit Sarah, I'm sorry.
I know, I said, I'm concerned that this was created outside of our board, and the precedent that that sets. Um, I would hate to think in the future that you would collaborate with other boards before you worked with your board as a team. And then probably the bigger concerns is that, um, you know, I promised that every decision you would make was about the kids, and I don't feel that this is about the kids. They got their athletics back, so what this really is, that last part, it's about granting us more power, the board, so this is to benefit us, not the kids, and I feel like that's equivalent to Congress voting to give themselves a raise. And it crosses a line of ethics to me, makes me a little uncomfortable. I think that, um, if it was just about athletics, yeah, we should be able to vote and, you know, get them back if we're in a situation like now, but we never saw COVID coming. There may be an instance in the future where that decision is then put on us and we don't have the expertise or the know-how to make a decision, and that burden, responsibility, liability is gonna fall on us. If we go through with this and this passes into law and we have all these decisions, so I feel a little uncomfortable with all of this, and I just wanted to make my opinion out there.
Sarah, I'm just gonna touch, first and foremost, I very much appreciate your opinion. Uh, the, the first thing I caught out of there was, was working with our board. Obviously, there's only so much communication we can have outside of, of board... Obviously there's only so much communication we can have outside of, of board meeting. As soon as this was brought to my attention, I forwarded it on to you guys for, for viewing purposes. Um, as far as the letter itself, um, I can let everybody know it has been presented to our attorney at Trune, um, which is working with, uh, quote unquote, several school districts, uh, with this same exact letter, same exact wording, uh, so on and so forth. Um, I do want to remind everyone that this is, this would work both ways. If it's unsafe for our extracurricular activities to perform, we can make that call to, uh, to, to stop our, you know, stop our, uh, a- after school events, uh, to keep our, our children safe. So it's, it's going to be, or the students safe. So it's going to be, it's going to be both ways. Um, did, did I, did I, do, did I touch on? And as far, yeah, as far as a political end, I don't think, I understand where you're definitely, I understand where you're coming from there. Um, I don't think this necessarily goes one way or the other.
Yeah, Sarah, if I can chime in on, on the political thing, like I think that it could be construed as political if you let it, but that is saying in my mind is like, uh, in my mind, COVID isn't political. Like it is, it's and, and it gets to the point where if 49 of the 50 states are letting their children play, um, like we, like, I think what, what, what the whole port point of this was is we know that it's safe. We wouldn't, we wouldn't vote as a board if it wasn't safe. Or we didn't feel it was safe. We don't have to, to vote that way. So I don't think it was, uh, ever thought of and it never even crossed my mind that this was political and like, that's my major. So that's, that's the crazy thing. Like, uh, um, I mean, I was a political science major. So, um, this, that just never even crossed my mind. So it's just interesting that you brought that up. Um, and I, I, I mean, obviously I know that this is, it becomes illegal to lock you in, but I think that like every other decision that we have to make as, you know, as educated adults that are, were elected, um, nonpartisan, you know, individuals, I think this is just, yeah, another one of those decisions that we would make if it was safe or not safe for our children, um, moving forward. Um, that being said, I think this is like absolutely awesome, specifically, uh, the fact that we touch on, um, the arts, um, like, yeah, my child missed out on some stuff for athletically in the, in the fall, but, uh, I also have a band student and that was a, a huge, huge loss. Uh, marching band was a huge loss for, um, not only her, but 95 other, uh, very talented musician students that we have at our school. So that's what I wanted to say.
One other thing, and I'll, I'll get right to you, Tim. Just, uh, one other thing, Sarah, and it states in here too. By all means, I mean, it wouldn't be just, uh, you know, us making a decision, just as we did with in-person. Um, working with local health department, looking, working with our ADs, working with the state health department. I mean, obviously if it came down to it in the, in the state shut something down, I mean, we would, we would listen to them. Um, you know, it's just, it's better advocating, you know, on, on a local level. Tim?
Uh, basically you guys have said what I was thinking. Um, I think another way to look at this too is we're not mandating that people play sports. We're not mandating people go, you know, the, the clubs and, and everything else. We're getting out of the way and giving families a choice to decide what's best for them on the personal level. Um, so, and I think with sports coming back under mandate on the eighth, we still need to vote on this to protect the band, the drama club, the, all the other clubs that aren't mentioned that are outside of the sports, just for that full rounded, like Mr. Steele was saying, the experience. So, um, that's kind of another way to look at it. And I'd like to add, if it, if it doesn't create a logistical mess in the letter, I would like to add, um, in-person board meetings. You know, we've been told to follow the science, follow the science. So on, uh, governor, the governor's order that came out today, she okays 250 people in a stadium that seats, I think it was less than 10,000 people. So what that means is the whole board can go to a basketball game and, and watch the basketball game, but the seven of us can't get together in the library. So I, if we're following science, I have a hard time reconciling the science between 250 people in our auditorium or in our gymnasium and not being able to have a seven in the library. It just doesn't make common sense. That's it.
Tim, would you like to ask for an amendment or?
Yeah, as, as long as it's not going to create, I know time is of the essence on this letter. And you know, if our lawyers are working with several people, if, if you don't see a logistical problem, I'd like to, to amend the letter to include in-person board meetings.
So just timeframe, if this passes tonight, uh, our awesome Jackie will rewrite this letter on Penfield Letterhead and have it ready for, um, uh, signature tomorrow.
Perfect.
This, this is what we're voting on. If you'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to make that an official, is it a motion then?
Amendment.
Amendment, yep.
To add in-board meetings?
Yes.
In-person, in-person board meetings?
Does that need to be seconded?
It does.
I second that.
Okay. Anybody with topic of adding in-board meetings, in-person board meetings? Um, my two cents there, I would honestly, if, if this passes, I would have to bring it to, to our attorney, um, to see what his official word is on it. Um, my only thinking right off the bat with talking with, with him this week would be that, uh, you know, if, at the same point, if the governor does, uh, uh, lockdown or, um, so on, as, you know, as of right now, she's saying no in-person meeting. So what we're asking here is from now on, she's not going to address athletics if, if she brings this to the local level. Um, she's not going to address athletics in her, you know, in her, uh, speeches and whatnot. Um, so that's, that's my only two cents on it. Um, whether it does pass or not tonight, it would have to be ran by our attorney and I can follow up with that as soon as, you know, as soon as I get a reply back from that. Kevin, you're not ahead. Is that, does that make sense?
That's right. Yep.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, uh, no, shoot, do we need to go on? We would have to vote on the amendment first. Sarah, if you would take a vote on the amendment of adding in-person board meetings? I think Sarah's frozen.
I think so too.
I can hear you. You're breaking up really bad, Sarah.
Sarah, can you turn your camera off and see if that'll help? All right. Can you hear me any better now?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So for the amended, um, letter, um, a vote, Dawn?
Yeah.
Um, Sarah, uh, no. Dana?
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
With a quorum vote of four to one, uh, that does pass, um, we again, will have to run that by Trune and, and see where that goes, but I will, I will follow up as soon as I know. Uh, back to the original motion. Um, anybody have anything to add on that? Then I think we could go ahead with a vote, Sarah, please.
Okay, um, Dawn?
Yeah.
Sarah is no. Um, Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Sarah, did you vote? I'm sorry. Did I?
Yeah, I voted no.
Okay, thank you. All right. With a vote of four to one, uh, this motion passes, uh, we will, uh, Jackie, awesome Jackie will do the alterations tomorrow with the letterhead. Um, I think she corrected me. There was a misspelled word. Or maybe that's already, already fixed. So I will email this to Trune, uh, as soon as we get off here. And I will try to get a answer on adding in-person board meetings as well. Um, I thank everyone. We will move on to 4.01 Comments from the public.
There's still not, um, anyone back in here. So I think Nate didn't show.
5.01 Superintendent Comments.
Yeah, thanks, um, President Wolfberger. I would say that, um, I'm very, thank goodness that we're getting winter sports up and going. And yes, we do have some extracurricular activities that we need to have some discussions about also. And the, uh, area superintendents and those from Calhoun County were having those, uh, questions that we're also posing. But at this point, hey, I, I can only echo what, uh, uh, Brett Steele had said earlier, you know, I grew up on basketball and baseball and this is uh, not easy sitting around watching where students are not having that opportunity, having my opportunity. Ah, man, I guess that's my signal. You're talking too much, Kevin. Still, we, we, uh, that our kids need this opportunity and, uh, I look for them to, uh, do well. And I look for the continued support that the board is giving them with, uh, having this opportunity as we move forward with our athletics. So other than that, you know, it's, uh, been a long night and I've got some more things I need to do as the weather starts making some changes as I would just kind of put that out there.
Thank you, sir. 6.011 Board Comments.
Call the snow day.
My phone is blowing up already with superintendents in the area. We're working at it already tonight to see what's happening.
Uh, looks like Dawn has her hand up.
Yes, I'd just like to thank everyone tonight for participating in this meeting and the importance of allowing our kids to play is, it strikes home very close for us. Um, these kids, it, it is critical for their mental health and without that, it's pretty tough to learn academics when your mind's not in the right place. And so I just want to thank everyone tonight and that's it for me.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else? All right. I was asked to bring this up in board comments. Um, Abby was unable to be here tonight. She had an emergency meeting. Uh, she did want to thank everyone, um, on her behalf as well. Uh, she is in full support of this in the understanding of being able to better advocate for our students and uh, clubs, athletes, et cetera, on a more local level. Um, on my behalf, uh, at no point in time is this a, a power thing by any means. Uh, there's, as we've all seen in the current pandemic that we're in, who knows what the next thing is going to be. Um, there's what I would call hotspots all over the state of Michigan. And I can just imagine the, the state officials, the health department and the governor trying to make a call like this to open up athletics, for example, over the entire state when there are certain spots that they don't feel comfortable. Uh, this is a prime example why we're asking as several schools to be brought, uh, this empowerment to, to, to do this on a more local level, uh, to where we can work closely in this case with, uh, with local health department. Um, and by all means, when it comes, I, Brett can contest. I've had several conversations with him. And the, the rules and everything with MHSAA, uh, we listen to MHSAA. Uh, they tell us we can't play. I mean, that's, you know, that's one of our deciding factors right there. Um, they have been very awesome on what they do for athletics in the state of Michigan. And, uh, so by all means, we're, you know, for right or wrong, uh, for good or bad, um, you know, we, we use our resources, just like we did a month ago, uh, determining, uh, in-school, you know, in-person schooling. So with that said, if nobody has anything else, I do not see any hands raised. I want to thank everybody for the meeting. I know it's been a busy night for everybody. We had a, a bond meeting earlier. Um, and then like, like Kevin said, weather coming in. So with that being said, thank you guys again very much. Um, 7.01, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second that.
Dana seconds it. I thank you guys very much. Have a good evening. Motion to adjourn passes.
Thanks folks. Have a good night.
Good night, Brett.
Thanks.